Hey, Mary Kay, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Ma- Mary.
I think I'm signed in under Bev's because Jennifer set me up for an LMAC meeting. So I think both of us are co-hosting.
Oh.
Does that make sense?
Yes, yeah, I think you and Mary Kay are both hosts, maybe?
Uh, I guess I'd have to get out of the meeting and sign in as me, and I'm not sure how to do that. I'm gonna have to enter as me, right?
I'm not sure. It may be easier to just stay under that account and have Mary Kay, I don't know if she can hear us again, but I think when you tried to sign out before it actually closed the meeting.
Oh, I got rid of y'all. Sorry about that. I'll just let you run it. It's yours, Mary Kay.
Just wait for John to sign back in.
Okay, I'm back on, right?
I'm here.
You got me?
I know what you mean.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you too.
Okay, I lost everything for a second, I don't know.
Yeah, my bad.
Oh, okay.
Guess, okay.
All right. Yeah, have we got a quorum? Uh, I guess so, yeah.
Five.
Five.
Yeah, we need four and then we got five, so I guess we're okay.
Okay.
All right, um, we'll call the meeting to order, um. We don't have any alternates, so we don't have to worry about that. Uh, any addition or changes to the order of the agenda?
Not tonight.
Okay, very good. Uh, communications and correspondence, the Habitat Habitat Newsletter. I, I took a look at that. It was really excellent. They had a lot of good things in it, uh, about, I, I, I remember seeing a program about the birds when they go to, you know, south for the summer. Uh, they get lost because of all the lights that are shining, and, uh, I thought that was very interesting. And a lot of other, you know, they, they were saying in the, in the report that I guess the bats are actually becoming confused too when they try to head for their, uh, places. But anyway, uh, okay, um, thank you for putting that in. Uh, audiences, citizens, we have anybody from, uh, the audience on? Okay. Uh, so let's get on to item number six, the approval of the meeting minutes. Do I have a motion for, to approve the regular meeting minutes of October seventh, twenty twenty-four?
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor, raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, okay. And the second one, item six point two, special site walk minutes of October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. I have a motion to, uh.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, okay. All right, item number seven, new business, uh, seven point one, the approval of the twenty twenty-five meeting schedule. And I think everything is on the first Monday except, uh, Labor Day, I think. Labor Day was on the second or something and it had to be moved, so that's the only one that I had a question on, but, uh, we can't have our meeting on a Labor Day.
That's right.
Okay, anybody want to approve that schedule?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All move. Um, okay, item seven point two, the application of Monica Majeski and David Fusco for the installation of a dock at one forty-four Route eighty-seven. Do I have a motion to accept that application?
Oh, take that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You wanna give us a little background on that?
Sure, so the, um, dock in question is actually already in place. Uh, I met with Monica, who's here tonight. Um, at the time of installation, she had worked with a company that's installed docks in a number of lakes in the area, but not Columbia in particular. Uh, and so they were unfamiliar with the process and didn't realize that, uh, approval was needed by the Wetlands Commission and by, uh, LMAC and Board of Selectmen. Um, so the dock currently, as I said, is in place and may need to be moved or altered in some way. Um, depending on LMAC's guidelines, I think we, uh, would probably be best to do a site walk, but I have, if I can get it open, some pictures just of the existing dock itself. Um, and I will try to share my screen here. So the, the dock itself, the construction is fairly simple. Um, it's just some screws into the lake here. And the property itself has an existing dock, uh, which I believe I have a photo of. There's the, the footing itself. Um, this is the existing dock that was already on the property, same construction as, uh, Chris Watts that we did, uh, I believe last year, uh, where it was falling in. It didn't feel safe for use at the time. Um, Monica has similar sentiments. Of course, these are a challenge to remove, so that may be something also in the future to, that the property owners would be considering. Um, and that was really the, the reasoning for wanting the newer additional dock. Uh, and Monica, do you have anything you'd like to add to the discussion?
I guess, guess she's muted. This looks like she's muted.
Yeah, I think so. So I, I think it, oh.
There we are.
Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Awesome, hi, how are you?
Good, good. Do you have anything, uh, that you'd like to, to add? Do you have any other information?
Um, I don't know. Uh, that's, you, you pretty much summed it up. Um, I didn't realize we had to take that process. Um, I don't know. Uh, we're not in any shape or form ready to replace that, that big dock there. The expense is too costly for us right now.
Okay, so you're gonna put in another one?
They did. Well, we did. That's how we ended up on, on this.
Okay.
I, I didn't realize that there were certain steps we had to take. I, you know, we hired somebody, the, the company that's been doing these for years.
Oh, all right. Is, is that, is that a floating dock or does it adjust to water? It looks like it adjusts.
Yes, it goes up and it rises up with the water level and now that the wa- there's no water there underneath the wall. It's sitting right on the ground.
Yep.
They, they didn't, um, put concrete posts on the bottom. It's kind of like a big screw.
Hmm.
Like a corkscrew.
Okay, uh, do you think that, that this, this would, could be an administrative approval, Isabella?
Well, because it is directly in the lake, I don't know if I can approve it administratively. Um, I think at this stage, the, the thing that really needs to be figured out is, um, LMAC and Board of Selectmen approval. I know that they have, uh, their guidelines are specific as to the location of the dock to the property line and the size of the dock. Um, so LMAC, uh, I know is planning to do a site walk to see if the dock is compliant or how it, how it can be made compliant. Um, and then through the approval process, we'll see what can be allowed and if any modifications are, are needed.
Okay, so maybe we should wait on this application until they, uh, make a decision.
I think that would be reasonable.
Okay.
John?
Yes.
Hi, John, it's Mary. Uh, Monica, Monica, this is Mary Roykel. I'm also on Lake Management Advisory Commission. And there's a threefold process. Number one, wetlands or IWWC approval. Number two, LMAC advises and does site visits on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. And then number three, the Board of Selectmen, based on LMAC advise, will then make a vote in terms of how to, um, place your dock, the size of the dock, et cetera. So I will be reaching out to you on behalf of LMAC, uh, uh, tomorrow at some point so that we can conduct a site visit. And Isabelle, I don't know if you want to join me, rejoin me or not. Uh, but we knew, do need to take some measurements, uh, to understand where the dock is placed uh, relative to abutting neighbors. And then I will also provide you a copy of the Town of Columbia Construction and Maintenance Guidelines, so you understand how we have to adhere to those guidelines and what those guidelines, uh, are saying. So I'm happy to work with you and we'll hopefully connect with you in the next day or two.
Cool, okay.
Okay, good. So that's the way we can handle this, uh, and then we can bring it up at the next meeting. Let's see what, uh, comes out of the meeting.
Well, thank you, John.
Hey. All right, let's see what we've got. Old business, item number eight. Uh, the application of Glenn Stevens to install a retaining wall and a patio at twenty-seven Sleepy Hollow Road. And I think we went on a site to take a look at it. You wanna give us a little background again on that, Isabella?
Yes, so we, we did go on a site walk to take a look at the location itself. Uh, the proposal is about five hundred square feet roughly of a patio adjacent to the lake. And then approximately eighty-five feet of a short terrace wall above the patio, just to even out the grade of the lawn itself. Uh, I do have a summary ruling prepared for tonight if the commission would like to act on it, but I, to be honest, I'm still working on, uh, figuring out the nutrient allocation plan, uh, in conjunction with the zoning enforcement officer. Uh, just to make sure that we meet all of those requirements. Part of how it's going to be accomplished is through, um, likely permeable, um, joint compound used within the patio itself. Uh, the pavers, as proposed, are fairly widely spaced apart. It would be the same materials we saw uh, in the site walk in the existing patio, which is right adjacent to the house. And then the other way of accomplishing it, um, as proposed is by taking a portion of the existing landscaping, which is primarily lawn right now, and transferring that to a mulched bed with, um, some trees and other vegetation. Uh, so I think that that will accomplish it, and I, I do have a summary ruling prepared, as I said. Um, based on that, with the requirement of meeting the nutrient allocation plan, but I'm still working on figuring out those, those final details to make sure that, uh, we're, we have a, a final detailed plan.
Okay, so, uh, did they meet the nutrient allocation requirements or?
It, it looks like they will. They may need some additional, um, infiltration and, and a couple of small spots, but I think for the most part with the permeable joint compound, as long as we get those details, uh, ironed out, that they will meet the requirements.
Okay.
I haven't officially solidified it with the zoning enforcement official yet.
Okay, fine. So, uh, we can vote on that tonight, uh. Do I have a motion to accept this applica- this, uh, requirement of, uh, the, uh, lake wall? And let's see, oh, I'm sorry, the retaining wall and a patio?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Hey. So can we have your, uh, update, uh, on this?
Yes, would you like me to?
Summary ruling?
Language? Sorry, John, I, I think you, um, my connection isn't the best. What, what was that?
Oh, may, may we hear the summary ruling?
Yes, uh, so it's largely the, the standard language, uh, based on the original maps that we've received. Uh, the duration for this permit is for two years unless extended by this agency. Special consideration is to be given to the Columbia Lake, which is designated under section one point six as a area of special concern. This approval is dependent on additional nutrient allocation plan approval. Any changes to the plan uh, as required to comply with the nutrient allocation plan shall be approved by the Wetlands agent. Silt fence and/or hay bales shall be placed above the site to be disturbed in order to minimize stormwater runoff to the area. Maintenance practices necessary to assure the proper functioning of erosion and sediment controls will be employed, including routine monitoring and removal of sediment and repairs if necessary. Controls to be monitored prior to and after forecasted rain events of three quarters of an inch or greater. And the applicant Glenn Stevens is assigned the responsibility for implementing the sediment and erosion control plan, including the responsibility of installing and maintaining the control measures, informing all parties engaged on the construction site of the requirements of the plan, and notifying the Wetlands Commission Office of any transfer of responsibility.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the summary ru-?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, tip?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All move. Okay, very good. Okay, uh, the next application, uh, does Jim, Jim Blair have to be here for this, uh, next one?
Uh, he was hoping to be here. He does have, uh, I think we discussed at the last meeting, a prior commitment with the Lions Club, um, so he's hoping to arrive around seven thirty. Uh, looks like we're getting through our material pretty quickly tonight, so.
Okay, uh.
I think we could discuss, uh, fifteen might be more straightforward. Um, let me see, I'm just pulling up the agenda here. That would be twenty-four, twenty-five dash zero seven. Um, if you'd like to discuss that one first and then see if we.
Okay.
If he joins before we get to, uh, forty-five, which is the one that the commission table at the last meeting.
All right, so let's get on with IWWC twenty-four, twenty-five dash oh seven, uh, the application of Jim Blair to rebuild the lake wall, the dock and septic system at fifteen Sleepy Hollow Road. Uh, you wanna give us a little background on that? I think we went to a site walk on that also, if I remember.
Yes, we did. Uh, so we have the site walk for this one, I believe shortly before we have the site walk for twenty-seven Sleepy Hollow, the same meeting. Uh, this is for a lake wall, a dock and an existing septic system repair. Uh, the septic system will be done separately from the dock, but under the same timeframe. Um, let's see, and I can pull up the maps that have been submitted here. We have kind of a, a lengthy meeting packet, but they're certainly useful. Jim is planning to use his standard, um, construction methods where he excavates roughly three to four feet back and, and builds the tight fieldstone type wall. Um, I'm just pulling up the map here itself. Okay. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
So he will be accessing the site through the existing right-of-way, uh, which is the Dobish property adjacent to this fifteen Sleepy Hollow. Silt fence will be placed across the right-of-way and then into the, the lawn itself. Uh, and he'll be using his standard gravel road, which is laid over, uh, a geo fabric, which limits the amount of erosion. Um, it, docks are existing and I think the only additional information we requested at the time of the site walk was uh, the stockpile location, which will be roughly in this area, and then there's a gutter drain coming off of the, roughly the center of the house, so that'll be redirected towards the eastern corner of the property and controlled with paybales.
Alexa, stop.
Isabelle?
Yes.
Uh, I did a separate site visit with Jim Santos and Jim Blair after wetland site visit. And I understand that Jim and the Vinings, the owners, want to take one of the docks and move it. Um, and I believe it's the dock closest to the Dobish property, if you see the property line in Dobish. Uh, and they want to move it over towards the, uh, Limons or the Salem, Salem Lyman property line. Uh, this current dock is seventeen feet from the Dobish property.
Hmm.
And they want to move it appropriately, and we typically say, in our guidelines for the Town of Columbia, say, you have to be twenty-five feet from the butters, budding, uh, buttering, excuse me, neighbor's property. And to move it, um, from Dobish towards Lyman, uh, we found a twenty-eight foot, um, spread between that property line and where they want to place that dock. Uh, as a subcommittee, I can't speak for all of LMAC until Wednesday. LMAC Subcommittee is going to recommend that, uh, to have a little bit more space between the abutting property and that dock. It's, we feel it's a little bit too close to, uh, the right-of-way, which of course, we're familiar with the Dobish right-of-way.
Hmm.
Are you fami- were you aware of that, Isabelle?
Yes, thank you for adding it. It, it's actually in the packet here.
There you go.
It slipped my mind.
Okay.
That's the, the new proposed location, and there's the, uh, other existing dock here. So between the two, this is the existing conditions uh, with the, the two docks and stairs, and then the conditions as proposed.
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, sh- should we, uh, wait for a ruling on LMAC for that?
I think that's up to the discretion of the commission. Uh, I know for a number of years, that's what the, the procedure was. At this point, um, we don't, it's not required that the Wetlands Commission waits for a ruling from LMAC and Board of Selectmen. Uh, they can be approved independently so long as the commission is happy with what's been proposed by Jim um, in terms of the process and the location of the docks and wall. Um, and then it can separately be approved by LMAC and by Board of Selectmen.
Okay. So let's do that then. Uh, so let's have a ruling on that. Uh, anybody want to make a motion to accept that, uh, prop, the, uh, application and the, uh, project?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so move. So we'll wait, uh, for LMAC to make their decision. What, but right now, we approve it. And you have a summary ruling for that too, Isabelle?
I do.
Okay.
Uh, this is for the application IWWC twenty-four, twenty-five dash zero seven for fifteen Sleepy Hollow Road. Uh, maps are dated October first to rebuild an existing lake wall, uh, and dock on Columbia Lake, and then to replace the existing septic system. Again, this, uh, the duration of this permit is for two years unless extended by this agency and shall expire upon completion, uh, of the work approved herein. Special consideration is to be given to Columbia Lake, which is designated as area of special concern. This approval is dependent on additional approvals from Columbia Lake Management Advisory Commission, LMAC, and Columbia's Board of Selectmen, BOS. Any changes to the application as required by LMAC or BLS shall be forwarded to the Inland Wetlands Commission. Silt fence or hay bales shall be placed above the site to be disturbed to minimize stormwater runoff to the area. And again, for a standard for our lake walls, no heavy machinery shall be used on the lake bed. Stone and lumber can be stored on plywood and placed on tarp on the lake bed. Maintenance practice is necessary to assure proper functioning of erosion. Sediment controls will be employed and controls will be monitored prior to and after forecasted rain events of three quarters of an inch or greater. All work shall be completed during lake drawdown between October fifteenth and March fifteenth in even numbered years or November fifteenth and March fifteenth in odd numbered years. Actually, I will change that to all work within the lake. Because I don't think that needs to apply to the septic system repair. Uh, and finally, the applicant Jim Blair is assigned responsibility for implementing the sediment and erosion control plan.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to, uh, approve the summary ruling?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So move. Very good. So we'll wait for, well, we will see what, uh, LMAC has to say about the, uh, location or later on.
Yes.
Um, okay, let's see, uh. So we still have to wait for Jim Blair unless we want to, uh, go to item number nine, uh, and ten and eleven. Uh, do you think, uh, we can have our administrative reports now while we're waiting for Jim Blair?
Sure, um, actually, it'll be also fairly quick. I have not approved any administrative approvals uh, since our, our last meeting in October. Um, we did have one notice of violation, which I sent out, which resulted in the application for one forty-four Route eighty-seven to the dock. Uh, so that has been, to this point, effectively resolved. Um, and that, that's really all I have for my administrative report for this month.
Okay.
Here, here.
All right, do we have any, um, commission open discussion at all? Anybody wanna talk about anything? No?
Is- Isabelle, do you just want to bring up the, um, uh, Town of Columbia Pilot Project with the dissipator, uh, being?
Oh, yes, you know, thank you, thank you very much for reminding me, Mary. Um, the Town of Columbia, we had an application last year for an energy dissipator at Town Beach, uh, which was before the Wetlands Commission. Uh, and included essentially stones placed, uh, like adjacent to the outlet of a, an existing culvert um, near the cove by Town Beach itself. Um, that will be going into place shortly. Uh, the lake is currently drawn down uh, enough that excavation and dredging is, that we discussed, uh, at the time of that application can begin shortly. Um, when we initially had received the application, there was some discussion over whether or not changes needed to be approved to what was proposed, um, related to LMAC and, and Board of Selectmen concerns. Uh, I think primarily through discussion of LMAC. It, ultimately, no changes were proposed, so the application, uh, as received and discussed by the Wetlands mission at that time was, uh, approved. And so that will be going into effect shortly to.
Next, next week, I think.
Yes, next week, to dredge, looking for my notes here. Uh, roughly ninety yards of sand from the cove itself uh, and to add in that energy dissipator to manage the runoff, uh, and erosion coming from the existing culvert.
Okay, very good.
That looks like that may be Jim too.
Cool.
Very good. All right, uh, well, we're, I guess we gotta get into, uh, item eight point three, uh, and hope that Jim Blair does show up, but.
I think he just did.
Oh, he did, is he there? Oh, he did, is he there?
There's a phone.
Okay, very good, very good. Okay, Jim, we'll we'll take your item here now. Item eight point three, uh, application of Jim Blair to rebuild the lake wall and replace the existing dock at forty-five Sleepy Hollow. Uh, got updated information we attached to the uh, email that was sent out to the commission. And uh, you want to give us a little background uh, on that, uh, Isabel?
Yes, I'm just looking here. For the updated map in the meeting packet and I again, share my screen. I apologize, I'm probably making weird faces and tilting my head. Showing up for me. Uh, here we go. Zoomed out, so can everyone see my screen right now?
Yes.
This is the the application uh, as we originally received it. Um, forty-five Sleepy Hollow has uh, a fairly natural um, lake wall profile right now. And it has been falling down, falling into the lake, unfortunately. So the plan as proposed is to uh, rebuild the lake wall, again with that tighter fieldstone um, construction. And we have revised plans here that include some changes to hold back the lake wall by, I'd say about a foot almost from what we originally discussed when we did go out to the site. Um, and also to slightly modify the opening so that uh, one of the main points, again with LMAC's um, standard guidelines is that there is an existing opening within the lake wall that was proposed to not be improved. You can see it here. Uh, so these are effectively where the lake wall has um, fallen and where it i- is currently uh, the current conditions act almost as steps into the lake.
Am, are you guys seeing this? I'm not seeing that.
I was just gonna say, I didn't see it either.
Oh, geez, okay.
Well, it's something that looks much better.
Isabel, your your presentation is, there you go.
All right.
There we go.
I can only be so descriptive. Ah, okay.
I I thought we were talking about losing you on the screen.
Well, you might lose me too.
Okay, can everyone see the uh, document on the screen now?
Yes.
Okay, this is the existing lake wall that was originally proposed. Again, it's a fairly uh, natural profile. Uh, there was a, an opening that was proposed to have no improvement to it uh, originally.
No, uh, are you gonna be up for a while?
Currently acting as essentially steps into the lake or an access into the lake. Uh, and we have the revised plan here um, to show a slight change in that proposed opening. Um, and again, as I said, the wall has been pulled back slightly, I'd say about a foot or more uh, in in most locations, just to better approximate the the face of the wall where it originally may have been. Um, there were three points that I believe LMAC will be voting on uh, which are related to the the opening in the wall and the size of the dock. And then Mary, is there one additional?
No, uh, the third or the very first point, which the LMAC Subcommittee is going to be presenting to LMAC uh, would be approval of the seawall uh, stakes as set now, the ones with green paint. Uh, and then the second uh, issue that LMAC will discuss with the applicant will be the thirteen foot opening. And the third issue is the size of the dock and uh, a rather creative um, application that is saying, if you allow us a certain size, we won't build a second dock. And that has to be presented to the entire LMAC Committee um, for discussion and a vote in terms of advising the Board of Selectmen. So that's the three. The seawall, the Subcommittee feels is good to go. The thirteen foot space and the dock uh, still needs further discussion.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
So Isabel, I was going to ask, similar to the findings, which we just voted on, uh, could we approve pending LMAC changes?
Yes, I believe absolutely that would be within the Wetlands Commission.
Because then we're ready to go once Wednesday happens.
Right, and it it sounds like based on my discussion, I did meet with uh, the LMAC Subcommittee, Mary um, included out there with Jim and that the applicant himself. And um, it does sound like the dock and the opening may potentially be settled at Wednesday's meeting.
That's our intent.
Discussion goes.
That's our intent.
Okay, so if if the Wetlands Commission can vote on this tonight based on uh, the the orientation and construction methods proposed and the the footprint of the wall as proposed as well, uh, then we can make that conditional upon further receipt of LMAC and Board of Selectmen approval.
Very good, I think that's what we'll do.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so do I have a motion to approve the application? And the uh, project?
So I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Okay.
Okay.
Second, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved, okay. Uh, you have a summary ruling for this one, uh, Isabel?
I do. Can everyone see it uh, available?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
So this is for IWWC twenty-four, twenty-five dash zero four, the application of Jim Blair at forty-five Sleepy Hollow Road to rebuild an existing lake wall and replace an existing dock on Columbia Lake. Again, this duration of this permit is for two years unless extended by this agency and shall expire upon completion of a work proposed herein. Special consideration is to be given to Columbia Lake designated as an area of special concern. This approval is dependent on additional approvals by Columbia Lake Management Advisory Commission, LMAC, and Columbia Board of Selectmen, BOS. Uh, any changes to the application as required by LMAC or BOS shall be forwarded to the Inland Wetlands Commission. Silt fence and hay bales shall be placed above the site to be disturbed to minimize stormwater runoff to the area. No heavy machinery shall be used on the lake bed. Stone and lumber can be stored on plywood placed on tarp on the lake bed. Maintenance practice is necessary to assure proper functioning of erosion and sediment control plan will be employed, including routine monitoring and removal of sediment and repairs if necessary. Controls will be monitored prior to and after forecasted rain events of three quarters of an inch or greater. All work shall be completed during lake drawdown, which is October fifteenth and March fifteenth and even numbered years and November fifteenth and March fifteenth and odd numbered years. And Jim Blair as the applicant is assigned responsibility for implementing erosion and sediment control plan.
Okay, very good.
Motion to accept?
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved, very good. So uh, we'll wait to see what LMAC uh, has to say on uh, the other points that we pointed out. Okay, very good. Uh, I guess that kind of finishes our uh, agenda for today. So uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Holy moly. Sure. Motion to adjourn.
Okay, second.
Have a nice day. Have a nice day tomorrow.
Okay.
You too.
Thank you.
All in favor, aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone, be well.
Night, Mary. Mary, Mary.